Yeah. So I look at this book, I open the back page like eighteen nine on the bottom.
Like, well.
Hey, well, welcome everyone and called order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is September fifth, twenty twenty-three. We're beginning our meeting at four thirty in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We will excuse Councilman Fitziamonu. He will not be joining us today. We have Councilman Hune online. And at the dais, we're joined with Councilman Whitestone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Norfelt, Councilman Christensen, and myself. And we're also joined by our city manager, Mr. Pyle, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We have the minutes of August twenty-second and August twenty-ninth. I'll turn it to the council for a discussion or a motion.
Mayor, I would motion to approve the August twenty-second minutes, but I would ask for a continuance of the minutes from August twenty-ninth special meeting, just so we can maybe put a little more detail in the conversation that took place on that meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and those pass unanimously. Um, for our regular meeting tonight, Mr. Pyle, are there any changes?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. There's one. We added resolution twenty-one dash one thirty, which we're also asking for approval tonight in the regular meeting, and this is for an emergency storm drain issue that has come up. The storm drain issue has been going on for some time, actually, but negotiating a solution to it with the property owners had taken quite a while. So now we're uh, ready to do that. We can address that item as it comes up in the agenda. I just wanted to let you know that was the change.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on tonight's agenda? From the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. No, I pulled the wrong one over. Okay. So our public hearing, we have SMI seven twenty-twenty-two. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, this application is a request from the West Valley City RDA. Department, we are proposing a new subdivision called the W VLA, West Valley Land Holding Subdivision. A portion of this will look familiar to the council. A little bit earlier this year, uh, we brought to you an item wherein the RDA conveyed property from the redevelopment agency to West Valley City for the purpose of eventually conveying a parking lot to Wasatch Commercial. So I appreciate, uh, Ken running through the slides. Um, on this next slide, which is just a little bit of a zoomed-in version. Uh, this is just north of City Hall. You can see the old, uh, Public Safety Building and the new police station. Through the police station, there is an arched line, uh, that runs through that. That is a actually a parcel. That was a leftover parcel when we vacated Market Street, uh, for Fairborn Station. And then the long piece that extends out to Constitution Boulevard is the portion of property that was conveyed by the redevelopment agency, uh, to West Valley City. The deed was recorded, I believe, in February of this year. So we have just a couple of photos for you. So the first is just looking to the west from fifty, or excuse me, from twenty-seven hundred west. You can see the old Public Safety Building to the left and the pu- and the police station directly, uh, to the west and then off to the right. Uh, there'll be, that is where the Lot Two is located for the parking. This is just looking east along Lehman Avenue. So you'll notice in front of the police station, uh, the right-of-way improvements have been installed. Uh, one of the purposes of this particular application is to dedicate a portion of right-of-way going east on Lehman, and we'll show you that in just a moment. The next slide shows an access easement that goes between the old and the new Public Safety Buildings. So that is a twenty-four-foot access way, which allows individuals who are traveling on Lehman to turn in uh, going north, which, um, provides two purposes. The first is to access the office tower, and the police also use that, uh, access for secured purposes. And then I think we just have this last slide, which is once again, just kind of looking across the site, the old Public Safety Building and the police station. So the subdivision plat, um, which I believe is the next slide, is relatively simple. Um, it creates three lots. So Lot One, which is on the left side of the plat, is the police station. So you'll notice that arched line where the old right-of-way for Market Street is no longer. The second thing this plat does is it dedicates the cross-hatched area on Lehman Avenue. This aligns with the existing improvements at the police station. And the third thing, uh, that this plat does is it creates Lot Two, which we have an ADL with Wasatch Commercial to convey that property for use, uh, for parking for the office tower. Kind of as a, a remnant, you'll also notice Lot Three, that's a big, uh, lot just above Lehman Avenue. That is where the old, uh, Public Safety Building is located. We expect in the future, when Wasatch has plans, uh, put together for the old US Bank and Zion's Bank, that that line, that north-south line will most likely be adjusted at some point in the future, depending upon their overall development plans. Uh, so that lot, we anticipate coming back before the council to be amended in one form or another. So once again, in summary, we're creating, uh, the three lots, uh, dedicating right-of-way on Lehman Avenue and allowing us to convey Lot Two to Wasatch Commercial. That is our report.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, very well described. Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to ordinance three dash one dash one zero two, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Flores.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Uh, so this is a an ordinance, uh, to change municipal code. Uh, this is, was that your request? Uh, and the way it is written, what would change is, uh, it would be a requirement for the city manager and assistant city manager to become residents within West Valley City, uh, within one year of employment. Uh, and that is the gist of it there. Um, if anybody has any questions about the way that was written, or uh, any questions for me on, on how this would play out?
Any questions from the council?
How do we? I just think resident. How do we confirm that? How do we quantify that?
That is a good question. Um, there may be a few ways. Uh, I, I am not sure. I guess it might be up to you and how you want to determine what that residency is. Um, we would, uh, just determine that we, my, my opinion is how we would determine that is uh, based on where they reside in, um, any formal documents they submit to us and, um, what is submitted as their residence on, as their employment, um, any records they hold with us. But I, I do think that could be difficult. I, I get why you're asking the question.
I'm still concerned, I'm and I'd have to do some more thinking on that, but maybe, um, primary resident i- i- is within the city. I don't know.
John, do you recall what it says for a city council member?
I, I don't recall.
Okay.
We could find that for sure.
Okay.
I think it's something like live within the district they're elected from.
Okay. Looks like Councilman Hune has a question.
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor, thank you. I have a couple of questions, actually. The first one is, uh, I prefer to go with six months instead of one year, but if majority go with one year, and I can go with that, but in this, uh, they, uh, uh, why, you know, other people, they have done it before very quickly in the past. I think this, uh, one year is too long. That's my, my first question. The second question I want to ask you is, uh, if they not comply with the rule and regulation like we just presented to the council tonight, what's the consequences or was the things gonna go after that?
Uh, I, I'm not sure if I can speak on that. Um, that would, uh, I mean, they would be in violation of a municipal code and uh, however that would play out.
Wouldn't it? You term, wouldn't we determine what that result of the violation would be?
I believe so.
So.
Sorry, we could add that to the contract, maybe the result.
Or consequence?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I prefer to have a clear cut for that one.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we're not assuming, you know, I don't want to assume it.
As you stated, Councilman Christensen, um, there's, there's lots of, lots of parts to the municipal code, and at any time, if the city manager was in violation of those, I, I believe that we would go down that same route as you, you as a council would determine what that means.
We need to put it on a paper resolution or just something clear cut. Uh, for that matter.
I'm okay with the twelve months, um, simply because you never know what that the real estate market might be like at that particular time and might be difficult. I agree with Scott, maybe change the language to primary residency or something to that effect. And then the third comment I have, this is separate from the city paying for moving expenses, right? This would be, uh, that, that would be on a case-by-case basis and not, okay?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
He, but actually, I, uh, man, sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
I just, uh, you know, this is, it's hard to tell, to be honest with you. It's a tough deal. They can have two houses. They put the primary and they have a secondary. Um, on a paper, they can do the primary for, you know, living in West Valley City, but they never reside in West Valley City. They reside somewhere else with a secondary. What are gonna, what are we gonna do? So it doesn't count.
Yeah. If, what if we had a provision in there that the secondary property couldn't be within a hundred and fifty miles of the city? So that would, it would eliminate chances of commuting from the second residence.
So that can go back to swear one, that mean that person not live in West Valley City?
Wouldn't that also prevent them from getting a, a cabin in Camas? That
Yep.
That, uh, that, or having one that, that's been in their family for a while, or?
Good.
Doesn't seem reasonable.
Well, you know, the only reason we're even talking about it is our current situation where city manager doesn't live here and yet owns property in West Valley, right? Or some sort of ownership of property in West Valley. So you can see how that could happen in the future, and we're trying to avoid that.
So no other comments? Okay. Um, do you mind looking up in your HR world? How that can be described better?
Y- yes.
Okay.
For sure. Yeah, we can look at, at some options.
Okay.
Based on the conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And then if you would send out an email as soon as you have that, so that it's not just next week when we get here, that everybody can review it?
Yep.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Then your second one, we'll go to resolutions, and we have resolution twenty-three, one twenty-four. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Flores.
All right, uh, this is a resolution, uh, to affirm, uh, the, um, us utilizing and, and the contract to, uh, hire Affion Public to, um, aid us in recruiting and hiring of a new city manager as soon as possible. Um, as we know, city manager Wayne Pyle will be retiring at the end of the year, and it's a big position and a large task, and, um, we, we would like, uh, to put together the most professional and, uh, quality process we can to, uh, fill that position.
Okay. To the council for any questions?
I think last we heard there was a one-to-three week. Have we heard anything different of maybe?
Um, no, they're, they're ready to go and would like to start scheduling things.
Okay.
Okay. Have to make sure everywhere, then nobody else wants to talk. Okay, seeing no other comments, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we'll now turn, uh, we have resolution twenty-three dash one twenty-five, and we'll turn the time to Mr. Pyle.
Thanks, ma'am. So as we all know, Ms. Nancy Parks, after many long years of service.
Parks?
Yeah, Nancy in parks, sorry.
In parks, okay.
Is retiring. Sorry, that was actually a little slip up there. And, uh, she, um, after many great years of service, uh, which I just wanted to recognize before I introduce the subject, leaves with her a big hole in vacancy to fill. Uh, fortunately, we have a very qualified person to fill that, and I'm recommending appointment of Ms. Jamie Young. I won't say Ms. Jamie Parks. As the Parks and Rec Director for West Valley City, this would start roughly around October first. We don't know exactly the day yet, but that's when Nancy will be retiring.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council?
Just two concerns. Um, one, um, you know, in our executive search firm, um, they had a lot of on Parks, the, uh, director positions open. Just wonder if we would want to do a, a wider search. And then number two, um, we're gonna have a new city manager in just a couple of months, and I think that city manager may want to, to make that appointment versus have it made before he, he or she gets here, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, um, I think that, uh, we have a culture in, in our city staff that's been established from our leadership that, uh, that the department heads and, and other leaders all the way down the line are training other staff members to, to take leadership roles and, and help those employees improve their skills and train them so that they can take these kinds of roles and, uh, and I've seen that happen with, with, with Jamie and and we're fortunate that, that that is our culture here. And if we have someone from within, that's, that's, that's ready and, and able, that knows our system, I think that there's some benefit for that. I, I also see benefit of, of doing a wider search, but but because we're having that transition, I think that it's, it's most appropriate to, to go with someone from inside for right now. Um, I hope that when the new city manager takes the helm, that, that they will give everyone that's there a fair shot and, and, and take the baton and keep running with it without too much shakeup, but, but that would be their prerogative. And, uh, with our consent for the department hats, right? So I, I'd hate to, to leave a position open for, for too long, especially this such an important position. And I think it makes sense to, to fill it now with Jamie.
Were there any other candidates considered or interviewed?
Yes.
Was the position posted?
No, internal candidates.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll move on to twenty-three, one twenty-six, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Council. This is a, a resolution that, uh, would address, uh, the city's small area plan for the area around Fairborn Station. So just a little bit of background. So in the twenty-twenty-two legislative session for the Utah Legislature, they passed House Bill four sixty-two. And in that bill, uh, they required municipalities with essentially track stations to have a, a small area plan for each of those track stations. So basically, the area surrounding those track stations were required to have a small area plan. And those plans, uh, along with, um, let, or land use regulations to implement those plans are to be in place by the end of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, now, they also made provision for cities that already have, already adopted a plan and, and land use regulations. The option of adopting a resolution, and that a resolution would then be reviewed by, in our case, Wasatch Front Regional Council, and uh, if they approve that or, uh, essentially certify our plan, then at that point, we no longer have to do a, a new plan for that area. And so that's what this is about, is to, um, pass this resolution, essentially stating that we meet the state's objectives and, and having a plan and having land use regulations in place. And assuming that's certified by Wasatch Front Regional Council, then we would then have to address the other three stations in our city.
Any questions from the council?
Just this, you may not know off the top of your head, but do you know some of the criteria that the Wasatch Regional Council is looking for?
Yeah, so really, they just want to make sure that, that we're meeting the objectives that are stated in state code. And, uh, in your packet, there's a, there's an attachment to the resolution that has kind of outlines what those are, and I can just touch on. So for example, one of the objectives that the, again, this is from the state, um, increasing availability of affordable housing, including moderate income housing. Um, uh, promoting sustainable environmental conditions, uh, enhancing access to opportunities, uh, increasing transportation choices and connections. And again, in this attachment, we've basically identified how our plan meets all of those objectives.
And some of those plans were put into place in oh-four and
Right, many years.
Far back, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will now go to resolution twenty-three dash one twenty-seven, and we'll turn the time over to Ms. Day. In the Parks Department.
Kind of like Ms. Parks. Has a nice ring to it. Good evening, Councilman and Mayor. Um, so this resolution is to award a new five-year golf cart lease, um, for both golf courses, the Ridge and Stone Bridge. Uh, we are reaching the end of our current lease. And, uh, so for us to be able to be operational and have the carts, uh, we need to get this renewed and get these ordered so that, uh, we would have the new one beginning April first. Uh, so as you can see, this, we solicited proposals, uh, from different companies. We received three that we evaluated. Um, and you can see the, the cost down here. I will say before that, we, you can see in one of these paragraphs, we're not including the GPS system that we've currently had. Um, what we have found is we've analyzed that over the past five years is that it did not bring the return of investment that we hoped that it would, and there were a few kinks in it. And so we didn't think that there was enough value there to include that, um, in this new lease. Uh, so with that, uh, being said, all three of these were evaluated. Uh, we broke them all down. Um, the, the pros, the superintendents, uh, talked to professionals at other courses. They also tried all three of these out themselves on the courses, uh, to see how they would do. I tried two of them out, so I participated a little bit, but, um, but, uh, so with that, we were able to see the superiority of the, uh, Yamaha golf carts that are offered by Highland Golf, which is why we wanted to pursue them. And if you look below, uh, you can see some of the savings that we would receive from that particular brand of golf cart. And these are fairly conservative numbers. Um, it's very possible that we'll see even more of a savings, um, than that um, as we go. So, uh, these would include the upgraded seats, which provides a better experience for the golfers, and it kind of, uh, brings the golf courses even to a higher level, which brings in more of the bigger tournaments and some of those things as well, and is very appealing to the public. Um, so if there aren't any, uh, questions on any of that, um, I'm proposing the approval of this resolution to award the new lease to Highland Golf for the Yamaha carts.
Hey, thank you. To the council, any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the, the issue paper says, says it's gonna require a budget opening. If you can tell us about that.
Um, only, well, and actually, the, the difference between what we're paying now, it was a little bit cheaper for two reasons, right? It was five years ago. Costs have gone up. But the other reason is we also had, um, when we turned in some carts, we received a credit, and that was applied towards it. So overall, the course um, of a fiscal year from what is budgeted for both Um, of a fiscal year from what is budgeted for both courses is about ten thousand dollars. Um, total for the two courses. So the budget opening may just be for that ten thousand. And the the only other thing we might be able to cover a little bit is we did, as you probably recall. Uh, I want to say it was a couple of months ago, uh, you approved the increase in tournament fees. Do you recall that coming through? And that may bring in enough to cover that difference. That's gonna require a little bit more analysis. But um otherwise, it would be approximately ten thousand dollars a year more than what's currently in the budget.
Okay, so ten thousand a year over the next five years?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, thank you.
At first I was just understanding ten thousand to the cost.
Oh, I apologize. No, it's okay. Per fiscal year, yes, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Good call on removing the GPS function.
I'm sorry.
Good call on removing the GPS.
Okay, yeah. It works back better on electric fleets, so than on the gas, so. We were hopeful, but yeah.
All right, seeing no other questions. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you.
All right, we now have resolution twenty three dash one twenty eight and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening. Uh, Kobe Wilson, Engineering Division. Um, as you know, the council earlier this year approved a one million dollar program modification for a project out on four thousand west. Between forty one hundred south and forty seven hundred south. Um, we'd like to get moving on that project. It's, it won't be a fast project. It's gonna take us some time. There's a lot of needed infrastructure improvements out there, but we would like to hire a consultant to get out there and get all of the survey. And right away and utility information that we need so that we can move forward with. Uh, the beginning stages of the preliminary design on this project. So this request is to approve. Uh, an agreement with Horox Engineering to perform those services for approximately eighty thousand dollars. And then to authorize that budget opening um of that one million dollar program modification.
Okay, to the council for any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now go to resolution twenty three dash one twenty nine and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is kind of a unique uh item of business that we're bringing before you today. As you recall. The city worked with UTA to have some improvements built on twenty seven hundred west between forty one hundred south and forty seven hundred south a few years ago. They received some federal funds, the Tiger, under the Tiger Grant Program. And um that project is essentially complete. I think the contractor is doing a few minor things still, but generally it's done. UTA is closing out the project and as part of their closeout process with the federal government on these federal funds, they need to give us a bill of sale. To transfer all the things that they built in our right of way to us. And so this, this bill of sale is does just that. It it all the sidewalks and the curbs and things that they built with those federal dollars are hereby upon the execution of this document. Transfer to the city and we will thereafter maintain and own them.
Any questions from the council or discussion?
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to resolution twenty three dash one thirty and we're back to Mr. Wilson.
All right, thank you. So this is for a project, a storm drain project out at seventy two hundred west. Um, just north of twenty one hundred south. It became. Um, evident earlier this spring that we had um some potential flooding issues out there that were affecting several commercial properties. Um, this basically came to light um because of the wet winter we had last year and that kind of exposed the problem. The problem ended up being actually in Salt Lake City. There were some obstructions placed in a ditch that prevented the flow. Um, of the water, a ditch had been filled in. Um, over the summer, we've worked with that property owner. Um, they have tried to reestablish the ditch, but it's just not a good drainage system out there. So. We've looked at an alternative alignment for this ditch and it actually puts it the majority of it in Salt Lake City right of way. We've coordinated with Salt Lake City. They've approved the alignment and are okay with us moving forward with the project. But we want to get the project done before this winter to avoid having to go out there and do a twenty four hour pumping operation with our operations crews. So. Because of that, we've reached out to a couple of local contractors to see if anyone has availability to construct it this fall before winter hits. We were able to talk to a couple and get a pricing for a couple. Um, it was clear that Cody Ecker was by far the most qualified. And by far the best price to get the work done this fall. So we would like authorization to move forward with this work and to get Cody Ecker out there to get this project done. Uh, before before winter hits.
Thank you. To the council, any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll go to a matter of new business to consider application SMI one twenty twenty three. And we'll turn the time over to Mr. Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. This application is a request from Dave Lorette. Uh, for a property located at forty five eighty one west, thirty five hundred south. Uh, this site is the old Bevins Marine. Oh, it was way back. Uh, Mr. Lorette's on this property for a good many years. And is looking towards retirement, but does not want to give up totally the business. So what he's proposing. Uh, for the city to consider is to subdivide this property. To create a new lot in the southwest corner. It's kind of that notched out piece that you see in the aerial photograph. So zoomed in version, uh, the existing building that is there will stay. Uh, Mr. Lorette has an interested buyer in the property, a business in West Valley City, who is. Most likely going to be needing to relocate due to improvements on Bangor Highway. They want to stay in the city, so they've approached him about the possibility of buying the the four acre, the larger chunk of his land. Mr. Lorette would then carve out a one or just under one acre, point eight acre piece. Uh, to continue operating his RV business. So just have a couple of photographs for you. Uh, so looking straight south. Where that uh little precast wall is right behind that area will be where the new lot is located. Next slide is just to the northeast. Uh, the entrance that you see there just beyond the power pole is the main access into the new lot. And then the next slide is looking just past that propane tank. You'll see a a little area that's fenced. That's where the new lot will be located. There won't be any new improvements here. Thirty five hundred south is uh will stay as it is. I was still reds con- um contacted you dot. They're fine with everything. There won't be any new building, no demolition. It's just a. A simple matter of adding a new lot to the property. So the last slide is the subdivision plot itself. So you can see the the makeup of the property. Uh, the larger piece is just over four acres and uh lot two will just be under um approximately point eight acres. There will be a new access easement. You can see that coming off of thirty five hundred south that would provide uh access to Mr. Lorette's property. So that is our report.
Thank you to the council. So I have one question. Is he gonna have RVs over in that part or are they agreeing to share the?
Yeah, I don't believe so. I think the business that's going to be located, and I'm not a hundred percent sure and probably wouldn't be able to say if I did. Um, I think they'll occupy the entire site with their business. I think Mr. Lorette, uh, at least the discussions that I've had is gonna scale back a little bit and maybe just do some of the smaller RV. That he's gonna have on those on the smaller piece. I don't believe he'll continue to use the that smaller piece for large. Wheels and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
I can confirm that with him and.
Yeah, I was just making sure it was good with our regulations as far as what he's gonna do.
Yeah, and any any new proposal, uh, any modifications or changes would go through our office for review.
Yeah, but I, it's sometimes they don't understand what the resident or the landowner. I know there's times there's been confusion in their brain. They think this is gonna work, but then they don't have the space they need.
Yeah, I I know in his uh explanation to the planning commission, he sort of did say he would really like to scale back, so.
Okay.
I think it's on a very small scale just to keep him busy in retirement. So. Uh, he understands the the nature of his site and the constraints that it has.
Okay, great. No other questions, thank you. Okay, we'll go to our consent agenda and I'll turn the time over to Mr. Powell. They all looked pretty routine, but is there any that you want to call out?
No, ma'am. Thanks.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll now go to our communication item and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Johnson. To talk about Cheryl Street and the Costco traffic.
Good evening, when you can see, I guess I'll be able to see my screen here shortly. Okay. Um, a couple of weeks ago, the city council, there were some discussions about what should be done. Regarding the intersection at Cheryl Street and thirty eight hundred south with the new uh apartments coming in. And there was a suggestion of of the installation of a traffic signal, so. I was, I was asked to to just make a presentation on this particular intersection and um hopefully answer any questions that. Of of what could be done or should be done and. Um, so as as background, I thought it would be helpful to just discuss um how traffic signals are warranted. There's a a process that we. That we must follow to uh install traffic signals. We should, they shouldn't be installed everywhere as as. If if it doesn't make sense, you're gonna make a lot of people upset about the installation of an unwarranted traffic signal as well. And so. Thought I'd walk you through the the MUTCDs, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's a. Great book if you ever cared to to thumb through traffic regulations and how things are are laid out, but um. But generally, the principles that there are nine uh warrants that that are that are uh that. Any one of them, if you met one of these warrants, it would then mean that you could install a signal, but does not necessarily mean you should install a signal. And so before a traffic signal is installed, there ought to be a detailed uh engineering study. That would make a recommendation for or against the traffic signal. And so, and in this case, we have not done that detailed engineering study, but we've. We've looked at things and and I will kind of walk through this. So the first three warrants in in the traffic. In the MUTCD traffic signal warrants are volume warrants um that. Uh, as you would expect, traffic volume is is a major player in whether or not we should install a traffic signal. And uh, and and so depending on how the traffic is distributed, there's an eight hour vehicular warrant, a four hour vehicular warrant or a peak hour vehicular warrant. And um, and it really just gives some different scenarios on how that volume would be distributed. Um, to meet certain criteria for a traffic signal to be installed. So really. And in in reality, though, if if you haven't met one of these first three warrants, you probably shouldn't be building a a traffic signal, even if you met. One of the others, but um, the next warrant is the pedestrian volume warrant and that is, as you would imagine, if there's. A a high volume of pedestrians that cross a busy street. There's a warrant process for evaluating whether or not to put in a signal for the pedestrians.
So is that relevant to just ones crossing at other lights or jaywalkers?
It's go in the middle. Jaywalkers, yeah.
Okay.
If if we have a traffic signal there, then if the signal's already there, then you can do improvements to accommodate pedestrians. Um, generally, if in that case, but but this would be kind of a mid-block scenario um where you're trying to. Uh, so there's lots of things that you could consider, but. Um, and then the next is a school crossing signal warrant. Um, again, just to make sure that there's. Good ways to get kids across school and or across streets and and before we did a. Would do a traffic signal for a signal, a school crossing warrant, we'd probably look at something like a reduced speed school zone or something like that. The signal would be likely the last. Last thing you'd probably look at, but there's a lot of steps you would go through before you put in a a school crossing signal. And then I've kind of uh lumped together number six and number eight, a coordinated signal system warrant. And the roadway network warrant. Um, the coordinated signal warrant might be if you had a corridor and you needed to. Um, consolidate cars like in platoons, you could use. Uh, a signal potentially to make that happen to kind of move vehicles along a certain corridor. And and then the the roadway network. And and with each of these warrants, there are certain criteria, like uh with the number, with the coordinated signal system warrant. They suggest that you shouldn't be closer than a thousand feet. Um, if you're. Hoping to let that be your justification. Your signal shouldn't be any closer than a thousand feet. And in our particular case at Cheryl Street, we're between six and seven hundred feet. And so it becomes problematic. It doesn't quite work for that scenario, but. And then the the uh roadway network, um, it's. I don't know, there's a lot of different criteria that you could go through to. Whether it made sense and and generally there's a volume component associated with with these. Two warrants. The next one is the crash experience signal warrant and it's really intended to handle. Kind of a high number of crashes and a high severity of crashes. And so, but usually if you're seeing those kinds of of. Crashes, that they tell you first, the 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 manual tells you to, you gotta do other stuff first before you do a signal. You've got to do other safety improvements. And again, the signal is kind of the last ditch effort to to solve a crash problem may exist. And then the last one is is actually relatively new. It's the intersection near a grade signal. Uh, and it's for railroad crossings and um the the concept being that you would install a signal approaching a railroad. To keep traffic from queuing onto that railroad. Um, so you're kind of adding a signal which adds delay to the system, but it it stops vehicles behind a railroad. We've actually. Uh, when we build the the rest of forty seven hundred south near fifty six hundred west, there's that railroad crossing. We actually, we actually will be installing. It's called a queue cutter, a a traffic signal ahead of that traffic or that rail crossing to keep the vehicles from. From queuing onto the railroad tracks, so. Um, it'll, we don't have anything like that anywhere else in the city, but i- in the design, it warranted that signal. And so that that will be built as part of that project, but. It's just for your information there. So looking at Cheryl Street in specific specificity, one second here. So we don't have all of the data that we would need to do a full traffic signal warrant study. Um, but we're, we have enough to to say that we don't think it would meet the warrants. I asked our traffic engineer to take the data that's included in the the. The uh traffic study for the development. And if we can extract any any data out of that, and really, he said that there was enough data for him to do the peak hour analysis. And um, but it wouldn't meet the warrant for peak hour traffic in that particular case. And so. But we're um, just the fact that we're so close to the twenty seven hundred west signal. And there are so many accesses that happen between Costco and twenty seven hundred west that it's, it's a pretty challenging situation and and a signal. May or may not be the best scenario. So we'll go through a few more things. Here's, um, I pulled up the crash data for all the crashes that occurred at that intersection. Um, for the data that I had for the last uh four years or so and. Again, there actually were more in twenty twenty two than than. Then we're accounted for in previous years for whatever reason, but but generally, I don't, we don't see a high. There's not a a large number of crashes and the severity is not uh extreme either. And so. Um, I don't think that it would warrant on a crash. Um, on the crash warrant. And then, um, so this is just kind of some data from the the apartment's traffic study that that was done. Before the traffic, before the apartments were built. Um, a little bit of background on level of service, that's something that traffic engineers use. To kind of grade congestion and how well a traffic system functions. My mom was never content with me bringing home D's, but in the traffic world, these are generally. As low as you want to go there, they're kind of acceptable. Um, and so that that little diagram might give you a a basic understanding of. Of what level of service might look like. In different flow scenarios. And so, uh, um, this table is from the this traffic study. And um, it analyzed three different, it graded three different intersections, the thirty eight hundred south and twenty seven hundred west existing traffic signal. The Costco and Cheryl Street access. And and then the new access for this development that they're calling the South Access, which is on the uh west side of the development. Has it accesses thirty eight hundred south. And so the grades that they assign, maybe I'll go to the next sheet, because it's got them. And laid out. So this is, if they built the project and we did nothing to mitigate anything. Um, the intersection at twenty seven hundred west and thirty eight hundred south operates at a level of service B, which is really good. In the traffic sense and set, and it's really, and I I agree with that. I don't generally see a lot of congestion there. And it's not a, it's not one of our busiest intersections. It's actually quite, quite, it's not terribly busy. The, the new develop, the new access that there would be proposing their South Access at the development. They, their study said that it would be operating at a level of service F, which is in failure and it's congested and suboptimal. And then the Costco Cheryl Street would be a D, which it's not great, but it's not the worst thing either. And so they, so that's if, if nothing was done, but, but their traffic engineer suggested that actually if we basically take a little bit of green time from the north, south movement on twenty seven hundred West and give it to the east, west movement on thirty eight hundred South, that that drops that intersection down to a level of service C. And then it essentially moves that congestion out of the intersections that are being blocked. And they, they believe that, that those two accesses would then function at a level of service C. So we would be sacrificing a little bit of operational efficiency and capacity at the intersection of twenty seventh West and thirty eight hundred South for a little bit of better functionality at those other accesses as well. So that's a recommendation that we could implement. This exhibit is just to kind of give you an idea of just to show where all of the accesses are. And it's in a traffic engineering world, this is not our favorite, like we prefer to, to have accesses to roadway staggered out and definitely, again, this is would be suboptimal. The little red dots are residential accesses and then the, the big diamonds are either public roads or kind of larger commercial type accesses. So one of the things that we kind of looked at is, well, could there be a median curb solution that we could put in there that would make some sense that could protect certain movements? And, and yeah, we certainly could. The only issue with putting stuff like that in is there's always a consequence for doing it that because people will go somewhere else, they'll do a U-turn and potentially create a hazardous situation elsewhere. I'm reminded of the, when the In-N-Out Burger came in on twenty seven hundred West, we actually preemptively installed out of fear of horrible congestion. We installed some left turn restricting medians that ended up just not doing anything to help. And we took them out and removed them. So my first inclination is going to be. Well, really, I guess I can look at this. I mean, based on my recommendations are that we probably should not install a traffic signal at Cheryl Street. We probably should look at, really wait and see how things shake out. And if it, if we do end up with a problem, then we can adjust the, the timing at the traffic signal at twenty seven hundred West. And, and then if the, and if we do observe a problem, we could fix it with other things in a future date. So that is my conclusion. And I'll answer any questions if I can.
We count questions from the council.
I just have a kind of a simple question on your accident summary. How would those accidents have been correctable?
They would be correctable because generally, well, that's actually a really good point. They're correctable. And most of these accidents were somebody turning left and not looking and, and striking a vehicle that, that is coming in the in that opposite ninety degree direction. And, and so in that sense, theoretically, a signal would prevent those crashes because generally people aren't going to be running red lights. But another side note is yeah, um, the, with the installation of a traffic signal, you are also likely to see other types of accidents, more rare and collisions and things like that as well.
Okay. So, because in my estimation, every accident is correctable if somebody doesn't do something wrong.
Yes. Yep. And this, this analysis came from me looking at the crash diagrams and trying to think, okay, could that have been changed? And, and again, I wasn't there, but and there, there was, there was an outlier, kind of a strange traffic incident was brought to the attention of the council a few years ago. And, and I didn't count that one as, as one that was correctable because it was such a, a strange outlier involving criminal behavior and things like that.
Thank you.
Councilman Hune has his hand up.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Dan, can you put back the map, the last one, the yellow line? Yep. Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to you. Came back very quickly. I appreciate it very much. My comment right here, you see the south side? Don't let people turn east. Because the traffic is the east and west very, very, very thick, I mean, very busy. And people, they coming out from the Costco and they try to go east and they cannot wait. Sometime they lose their patience and they just put the barrel, put the gas go fast and couldn't make it. And they just go into the people's house. And actually it's a lady that in front of there at the three times in one year. So don't let them go east. I think maybe go west. And I mean, will reduce the number of the accident or the things that happened to her house for three times in two thousand twenty twenty two.
Yeah, that we certainly could. We could certainly restrict left turns out of, you know, in or out of, of certain movements. And in this case, I, well, and, and I guess just the consequences of doing that is just the fact that, that you would likely result in more in U-turns somewhere else that are potentially causing problems. And my recommendation is really just to, is to wait and see, and see what develops out here. And if we end up with a, a traffic problem that we can solve with some median curbs, that's easy. That's an easy fix. But we also don't intend, we don't want to do things that to cause additional problems elsewhere.
So you're saying is to wait and see for how long?
I'd say it after the development's built and, and we watch it, we can certainly we will watch it as soon as this that the apartments are built and they're, they're full and they're generating the traffic they, that they will generate. And that point will have a better understanding of, of what happens. Cause and the reality, let me go back to this thing, just the proximity of all these accesses close together. It may, you know, it may necessitate restricting left turns, but I also hesitate with those residential properties on the south side of the road to, they end up having a right in, right out, which is inconvenient. And, and if, if it's what needs to be done in the future, we can certainly do it.
So are you referring to, in the analysis, you said that the people coming from that neighborhood would not be able to make like a left turn out of there because median would prevent them from having full access to go either way.
Yes. Okay. Yeah. And, and in this case, there's one road, there's a road just to the east that probably wouldn't be that big of a deal. You know, there's a, a way out and the traffic pop patterns would, would adapt, but at least on the south side of the road. And if we restricted left turns out of Costco, the alternative exists on the, the east side of Costco. We have a one-way frontage road where they could go and make a left out of that road as well. So. You know, it's
left turn entrances to those properties on the south too.
It would. Yes. Yep.
Yeah. So you never know the consequence of keeping away somebody's access.
Correct.
The accident data, is that, is there a delay in that? Or have we not had an accident since?
The data that I get, I believe there's a two or three month delay. I get it. Udop publishes, they don't, they provide to cities, a great database of their, of crashes to enable us to do a pretty good analysis and have a deep, a deep enough understanding of where we have some hotspots and things like that, but they do delay it. We don't get, I don't get real time data.
Just another question about authority, city council normally doesn't. We, we don't vote on traffic. Were we just discussing this because of the request from Councilman Hune?
Yes.
And so based on this discussion, could we override what the traffic, what the suggestions are based on our own councils? Like, do we have the authority to override?
You mean to build the traffic signal without a warrant process? Probably. Yeah.
I'm just curious. Because if you look at those accidents, it says warrants require five correctable accidents in one year period, and they, it got pretty close.
Yeah. But they also have additional criteria that has volume thresholds that we likely aren't to meet. And so I, I really don't think we would get there on the, the crash warrant, but, but also I haven't done that a detailed analysis either. We haven't done a study. But based on what we know, I don't feel like a study is really what ought to be done.
This, this could be one of the most traveled intersections by our residents. I mean, every, almost everyone has a Costco membership. I know my wife drives this street a couple of times a month. So.
The advantage Costco has is that there's several accesses on twenty seven hundred West plus the, the one-way frontage road that parallels I two fifteen. So it's, there's lots of ways in and out. Which when I use Costco, this is generally my way in or my way out at least.
Yep. It's usually our way out and sometimes our way in. So. But, uh, yeah, we definitely want to keep an eye on this when the development's finished. Cause I think I'd be in favor of some something there. I don't think the signal is, is the right approach, but a median might be.
But there may be something else. Yeah. And, and really the thing that I've learned from that, like that In-N-Out Burger example is I think we're better off to just wait and see what really happens and how the traffic.
Sorry, could we just do a no left turn out of Costco?
Like a sign or physical improvement?
Sign and, and maybe a small.
Signs are cheap, but they're extremely ignorable.
I know I was, went for a walk yesterday down, it's my next discussion item, down Charles and it started flashing. And I, I was walking forty five miles an hour apparently, and then the car went past.
You've always got a good pace to your stride.
So my question is, um, on twenty seven hundred West, if we adjust the light, how does that affect the light to the north and the light to the south?
There could be an impact and they're really, they really could. Thirty six fifty is not very far away. But I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know honestly, without doing a little bit of analysis, my gut tells me we'd probably be okay. Level of service C is okay. It's pretty good. And, uh, but you never know until you try, I guess.
So those other two lights are not close enough to a F to with this delaying them, causing them to be Fs?
I don't have information on the
on our other two.
That's a great question, but I don't have an analysis of how those signals operate.
Okay.
And my, I, I, my gut tells me that they're, they're not B or C, like thirty eight hundred South could be, but.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Hey, thank you. All right. The council calendar. Did anybody have any questions or concerns? We'll move on to potential future agenda items.
Just wanted to check on, we were going to talk about speed humps. Just wanted to see if that's
The twelfth?
Next week. It's coming in. All right. Thank you.
I knew it was coming right up.
And so is that Palmer?
Hopefully Palmer and Charles.
Charles. Okay. Cause that my note was Palmer, Palmer, polymer drive. Okay. Works. Mr. Christensen.
I had a question come up during my meetings, the national nights out. And a resident asked me why when we developed forty one hundred and Redwood Road, a large complex there, we didn't require affordable housing as part of it. And I told her I would look into it and find out. And what I found out was that we approached the developer with that idea. But the developer, when he penciled it out with all of the restrictions that come with affordable housing and federal grants and federal money wouldn't wouldn't be advantageous to him to put that affordable housing in. So he didn't. And when I took that report back to the resident, the resident said, well, Salt Lake has a a requirement that all housing projects need to have affordable housing. And I said, we don't have that requirement. She said, would you ask why? So if we could just investigate that and see, you know, if there would be a, an appetite among the development community to have something like that, or if we need something like that, just look into it and give us a report on it.
So yes, absolutely. We could go and, and gather information from the development community as to what their feeling is on that. But I, I can pretty well state from
I'm pretty sure they'll all decide like that developer.
Well, I wouldn't even refer to that. I was, I was going to go back to Salt Lake's decision. I think that was just sheerly a policy decision. They wanted to make that a policy of the elected body. So that's why they came to that. It's not a, it's not a market condition. It's not a, a requirement of the state or anything like that. They just wanted to make that as a
And, and I know that our affordable housing inventory right now is very high and you know, do we need something like that or not? It's, is what I was
Right.
wondering about. So.
Right. I would say certainly, and you know, the policy question's a larger question, but right there at that specific spot, we certainly do not. There's literally hundreds, if not over a thousand rental units there immediately to the north and in the vicinity that would qualify in the low income range or low to moderate income range. Okay. Yep. But if you want us to go do something like that from a inner, I mean, a a question or a survey sort of standpoint, we could do that.
That would be up to the council of, you know, I can't control them.
But I think we have with our report that we give to the state every year with our income, housing, low income housing. We have quite a large inventory, as Mr. Pyle said, and other cities do not, and they need to catch up with cities that have quite a bit. So I think that's why others had to put it into a policy because it wasn't coming their way and we already have it. So I don't know that we need to add to it. Is my opinion on that one?
I think we can always encourage more affordable housing, but I think Steve could tell us that our affordable housing report to the state is, we probably have more boxes checked than, than most cities. So.
Yeah. In fact, other than probably Salt Lake, that's absolutely true. And the, and the other thing I would add, which Steve did allude to in the reply to Dawn is I'm pretty sure almost every one of these projects, if not every single one, we explore the possibility. So whether we required or not, that does get to the gist of what you'd be asking about.
Thank you.
And I'll just add, since it's kind of our world in the, in my day-to-day job. The areas around tracks are going to be more of a target for affordable housing. So developers get extra points to get low income housing tax credits if they're within a third of a mile of tracks. So that forty one and Redwood wouldn't, wouldn't get those extra points. And so they, they wouldn't want to put their efforts towards an affordable housing development there in an application when they probably wouldn't get credits for that. So my guess.
That answer your question?
And it does. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Was there anyone? Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else that had an issue or anything they want to add to a future agenda item?
I guess just an update on the, I had asked a couple of weeks ago for a council to. Consider the, a name change to a street and um, for Doug, for Officer Doug Barney. And I spoke to the resident and they, it it was. So this was a group of residents that thought this would be a a great idea, but they had not approached Doug Barney's late wife. And at this current time, she would rather not make that change, it would be, it's just too. New, it would be too painful to turn on to that and see that name, so she asked us not to do that, so just follow up with the council.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, uh, council reports.
Sorry, I'm just going back one step.
Okay.
Can I, can we get like an email that shows what you kind of have forecasted out for study meetings? For the next month, because I think there was a couple others that I just want to make sure they're on there, thanks.
Hey, council reports. Nobody? There were a lot of national night outs, which they were all really good, I thought.
They were.
Yep. Okay, seeing no other, do we have need for a closed session today, Mr. Pyle? So just one more. Or a business.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, please, CI?
Hi.
And we stand adjourned, thank you. See you back at six-thirty.